All right. All right, we're calling the meeting to order. We have four trustees on the telephone. That gives us a quorum. In attendance are trustee Lorenzen, trustee Duggar, trustee Wake, trustee Gregston. On the phone, we have Marcia Holland, Jennifer Newbold, Heidi Kendall, and Grace Decker. So that gives us a quorum of the full board and plus a quorum of the elementary board. I'm the only elementary trustee here, so they're going to have motions for elementary. You're going to have to come off the telephone. So first, I guess, well, there's this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three on the agenda, we review and revise the agenda. We're going to suggest that we move all the action items forward in order to make sure we don't lose our quorum. So we'll carry on through item seven as listed, and then we'd like to move item 9A1, 10A9 and 10 and 12, and 10B1 and 2, all into place ahead of item eight. Is that okay with the trustees?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. So our next action item, we would approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' special meeting from April 5th, 2018, and that is, those are provided in your packet on page six. Does anyone have any, first, I guess, motion?
No, just asking.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? On the phone? Okay.
Not here.
Okay, so could we have a motion from a trustee to approve the minutes?
So good.
Moved by trustee Duggar. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Wake. Any conversation among the trustees? Okay, everyone in favor of approving the special meeting minutes from April 5th? Please signify by raising your hand or saying yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. That's unanimous, as all trustees present. Item five on the agenda is public comment or correspondence. We have some correspondence on page 10 in our packet, which we won't read, it's available. And this is a time for public comment on non-agenda items. We always get some interesting comments that come forward at this time, so if anyone would like to make public comment, please step up to the podium and do so. Rats. Okay. Seeing none, no public comment tonight. Okay, so at item six, we will be welcomed to Seeley Swan High School by Principal Kat Picora.
Thank you. I would, of course, like to welcome you back to Seeley Lake and to Seeley Swan High School. It's always a pleasure to have the board here. You probably know this already, but this has been a very unique school year for us, starting on the first day of school. But I'm happy to report that we've survived the challenges so far, and we're are, we are probably stronger and better for all that we've undertaken this year. As you know, we were part of the Stanford University Challenge Success Program, and we did not go in the fall because of the evacuation, but last weekend, we had two staff members, a parent, and two students who, Nicole being one of them, who went to Stanford and took part in the Challenge Success Program. This fall, we also introduced a new program to our students called Naviance, and this program is computer-based, it's designed to be a college and career readiness program. It aligns student strengths with their interests, and it has a number of modules, including the college prep module, ACT prep, community service piece, an academic planning piece, and also career exploration, and that is based on their interest inventories that they take. So we're really excited about that. We basically introduced that this year, and we will be continuing that next year, along with a new program called School Connect, and we will be using that with our freshman class, and it basically serves as a point of transition for our new freshmen. And there are several modules in that program that deal with everything from academics, like how to take notes, to building relationships with teachers and with their peers. So we felt the need to go to this type of program. Our freshmen, we know, need this information, and we're going to be doing that probably on Wednesdays in a 45-minute session every Wednesday. And then 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students will be using Naviance to do planning for college and their futures. So we think we're on a pretty good roll here to get some things done for our students. We also have tonight a special group of students who went on a trip to Costa Rica, and the teacher who went with them, Tanya Smith, is here tonight, and I'll let her tell you about the program and introduce the students who are here. Thank you.
All right, we're going to make this short and sweet, but we wanted to let you guys know what we had done in Costa Rica, and I wanted to make sure that the community and the school board also knew what a great, is that what it's called here? What a great job these kids did representing us in an international, in an international way. So we're going to give you a quick little PowerPoint. I don't, I just have the pictures on my iCloud. I had a six-month today, so I wasn't able to power it together. But we have Cecilia, and Ashley, and Chance, and Ella, and Nicole, and Keaton. There was 13 total kids that came with us. And this program is really unique, because it's not just a vacation for them. These guys worked their butts off while they were there, and were in really uncomfortable and growth mindset situations. They moved into a house with a family that spoke a different language, and that was, you know, a challenge for a lot of them, but they grew, they grew a lot from that experience. So if you guys would come up, I'm just going to flick through the pictures. We won't take a lot of time, but I'll show you what we did. We went to Spanish school, they had a homestay, and we also did service projects, so. So can you guys all see that okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so this is, we went to Manuel Antonio first, so that's the beach, and then I'm just going to let these guys kind of talk a little bit, so when you guys, you guys just feel like it, just jump in and talk about where we're at and what we're doing.
So this is me with our instructor, that, her name's Sarah. She, she helped us through the whole, the whole deal and set us up with our homestay families, and it was, she was just really good to us the whole, the whole week, and you could tell that she contributes a lot to her community, because she knows everybody there, she waves everybody, and actually in the picture, she has her scouting uniform on, because she had to rush back from the, uh, community, uh, Boys and Girl Scouts, a big celebration that they just had.
Woo!
Well, that was a fast tour.
At this, at this point, I'd like to see if trustee Smith is joining the meeting. Mike, can you tell him he's still?
All right, anybody have any? We'll hold down.
Mike Smith is here, if you want to, but if you want to stand on it, we'll keep going.
I'll just take the target here.
Okay, thank you.
Over to the next page. Do you want to talk to me, want to talk about the school? So the school was called, I don't remember the name, but basically, Esuela de Aleja? I don't know. It basically meant like school from the high place, because it was really high up in the mountains, and there were about 18 kids going to that school, and usually, they don't get a lot of help from the groups that come to Arosi, because it costs a lot to get people up the mountain, but we had enough to get up there, and we did a lot of repairs. When we had time off, we got to play with the kids. That little girl, I believe her name was An, I think it was Angela? Angelina, it was Angelina. The kids were really cute. We painted theirs seesaw. Chance, Keaton, and Corinne, they made new doors for the girls' room, because that one was rotten, it was falling apart. We also dug out the garden, we planted new, I don't think we, we planted some things. Yeah, we planted lettuce and some sort of, it's like a cabbage. Yeah, I think we planted cabbage.
We did whole new bathrooms. I think the girls' bathroom didn't have a toilet seat, so they, these little girls, like, from eight to 13, had to basically sit on the toilet without a toilet seat. So they were really excited when we came in. Did all the plumbing and put a whole new door that actually locked, so they wouldn't have to worry about someone coming in whenever.
We also put electricity into the one building, so one building had electricity, the other building didn't, so they were running electricity lights to the bathrooms, so at night, it gets dark really early there, so we helped with that, too. These are the kids. I also got to plant a fruit tree, which was really fun.
This was a dance night we had, it was kind of like a traditional Costa Rican dance that we were taught, and this is all of us with our homestay families, it's kind of a tradition that they have, that Sarah and her husband Juan kind of put on every week, every time a group comes, they, you come with your homestay family, you learn a dance, then you dance with your homestay families. And unfortunately, we were kind of cut short on our dance night, because one of our members had a knee injury that ended up in having to go to the doctor.
Maybe it was during limbo, so. Somebody want to talk about the homestay families and the experience you had with that?
This is my homestay family mom. Her name's Anna Salazar, and she is an amazing cook, and she's very funny. And I, well, she was a, I wish I could speak more Spanish, but I kind of should have prepared a little bit more before I went down there. But what I could talk to her, she was really nice, and she was always very welcoming, and like I said, the food was amazing. I miss, I miss being there. But yeah, she was very nice. She had three dogs that were adorable, very friendly, and she had a daughter and two sons, and her husband was very nice. It was great.
Was it you or my dog?
Me and Keaton stayed together with another boy. It was actually only three boys on the trip and 10 other girls, so we were stuck with each other basically the whole time. But our home, we met our homestay father the first night, but in the morning, he got up by like around five and left for the whole week. He had a job in the town, I think like two hours away, and he spent the whole week there and came back on the weekends. So he never, he only sees family about like every weekend, but the, our mom, her name was Ness, was a really nice lady. She had a son and a daughter, both went to school, until very late hours, probably like eight o'clock, they got around back home, and I, yeah.
So we worked almost every morning at the job site at the school, building the school, but one morning, they had, they had a holiday, so we went up into the rainforest. Somebody want to talk about what we did?
Cecilia. So we went on a hike up into like the rainforest, and we got us, go on this hike with this guy named Nano, and he lives up there, and like barely comes down to get food and stuff, and he just like kind of resides in this place above the town we were at, and we just got a hike and like look at different leaves and different like, just like different whole like new like ecosystem that we don't really get to see here. And he took us to his house, and we got to see he had like two boats and so many dogs, and brought out kittens for us to hold, like gave us like coffee and food, and just talked about like his life, and he asked questions, that we sold our Spanish teachers later on, and all of those things up there, like different coffee brands, and like told us which one we should get if we wanted to buy a coffee, and just kind of chores around this area that he just lives his entire life in, like, really cool. And we got to see a view of Arosi once we like got higher up, and it was just really cool.
That's where we hiked through, it was very, it was.
We were in the jungle.
We were in the jungle, for sure. And then there's the, the town of Arosi. Anybody want to talk about the town or what you thought of it? It was a really nice town. I was staying with Corinne and Jayla, so we would have to walk home like at night sometimes, but honestly, like I felt totally safe. I didn't feel dangerous at all, and I just hope people would be like, hi, and they would say hi back, except they wouldn't say hi back, because we would be pulled up or something.
It was just a really friendly, nice, small town, like, what was it, like 4,000 people? It was like, everyone was really kind and it was.
So there's the whole crew. We painted that building there, and they made the doors, they painted the doors, and that's where we put the electricity in and the toilets. Boy, we're not looking anywhere near your camera. I know, it was wrong with the camera. Except for Kiera. There's also another girl there, she wasn't a part of our group, but she was staying nearby, and I guess she was friends with Sarah and Juan, and so she and her brother were there, and she helped out at the job site.
That's us with our homestay family. They had a three-year-old daughter who was really fine.
Tell them about the dream house. So last, the last day before we went back to San Jose, we just drove around, we were going to try and go to, there's a volcano, we were going to go and see it, but it was too cloudy, but we found a cool house, a few different views, so.
It was in there like two brothers who carved wood, and they like, from like little coffee pans, really cool coffee sculptures, and carved little sculptures.
Really pretty things in those. It was just like quiet. I'll see if they have any questions for the next.
Thank you. Very nice.
Does anyone have questions? I do. Did you have someone else helping with the plumbing and electrical, or did you just come with doors, or how did this work?
Sarah, so the lady you saw in the picture, her husband named Juan, he is very handy, so he kind of knew how to do everything. If we ever had a question, he, he would set us up and tell us. It was kind of nice, because they didn't make us feel like kids, really, they were kind of like, okay, here's your utensils and your jobs, and this is what you have to do, this is how you do it, and they kind of let us, trusted us to get the job done. So that was really cool, just to have them trust us to get everything done, right? And so if we had any questions, we'd just talk to them, but, so they were really friendly and thoughtful.
There was also a guy named Donovan, who was also helping out. She's really struggling to hear. Okay. Can we push this?
Do, does anyone on the phone have questions?
Oh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda, item seven, we have student trustee reports, and Keaton's our only trustee, so go ahead.
So this, the celebration of arts will be tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, where the band and choir will perform, and the drama class will show a preview of their play, The Awesome Ages Prom. Creative writing class will read poetry, and art class will have some of their pieces on display. Earth Day was Sunday, so this week, Student Council has Earth Week challenges for City Swan High School students. Monday's theme was to reuse, so reusable water bottles receive points for their class. Today is reduce, so students were challenged to carpool, ride the bus, bike, or walk to school, to reduce their carbon footprint. Tomorrow's theme is recycle, so students will be bringing in canned newspapers to recycle to earn points for their class. And Thursday is Green Day, where students will wear green and be cleaning up garbage and working in the green. This past weekend, City Swan High School sent parents, teachers, and students to Stanford, where they work with the program Challenge Success, whose mission is to partner with schools, families, and communities to promote a broad definition, a broad definition of success, and to implement research-based strategies so that all kids are healthy and engaged with learning. Back on March 7th, City Swan High School held a Career Day for its students. Students took a survey through Naviance, where they received a career that related to their interests. Professionals ranging from cosmetology to engineering were then invited to come and speak to students on Career Day. Students were placed in groups and learned more about the careers that they were interested in. The City Swan High School prom is only 10 days away on May 4th, and students are getting excited for the vintage carnival thing to thank. Next Tuesday, in connection with reading young men, the senior class will be taking a trip to Mangolge, where they will learn about 13 smokejumpers who lost their lives fighting a fire there in 1904. Three seniors from the creative writing class will be going to Drummond on April 30th for a poetry workshop with 7th and 8th grade, 7th and 8th grade classes there, and, and 13 City Swan High School students went on a 10-day trip to Arosi, which was. And for sports, we're halfway through the spring sports season, and the City Swan High School track teams are already dominating track meets. In fact, today, the Western Montana Top 10 Track Meet was held in Missoula, where the top 10 athletes and relay teams from all classes across Western Montana compete against each other, and seven Black, seven Blackhawks athletes were invited, and they competed today, two girls and five guys. Every single running, men's running event, except the hurdles in 3200, included a City Swan High School boy today. So we're really looking forward to district's divisionals this week coming up soon, hopefully we bring home some, so, trophies. And then our golf team this year is only one strong, but he's looking forward to an exciting and successful season.
There is an I in team.
Great. Well, thank you for the report. Our next item is the Health Insurance Trust Fund Report, which is routinely included, and it's on page 29 of the packet. We won't look at that right now. Next, we have announcements from Superintendent Mark Thane.
And I'll be very brief tonight. Certainly want to call your attention to the fact that Election Day is Tuesday, May 8th, and ballots should be in the hands of all Missoula County Public Schools' registered voters. It's important that the ballots be marked and returned to the elections office by May 8th in order to be counted, and there are both elementary and high school levies being proposed by the district. So we encourage everyone to be informed, all the information is contained on our school website, and please cast your ballots. The next regular Board of Trustees' meeting will be Tuesday, May 8th, and that will be followed by a special board meeting on Thursday, May 17th, where we'll canvas the election results and do the reorganization of the board for the 2018-19 term. Just call your attention to a couple other highlights. Hard to believe that we're into May next week, but Thursday, May 31st, at 3:00 PM, we'll honor all retiring staff from Missoula County Public Schools. We'll do that in the Sentinel High School cafeteria. And then, beginning Thursday, May 31st, with the Willard Celebration, we'll launch graduation season. The graduations will occur primarily on Saturday, June 2nd, with Big Sky High School at 9:00 AM, Hellgate at 12:00 PM, and Sentinel at 3:00 PM, followed by the Adult Education Program's graduation at 5:30 PM. Then on Sunday, June 3rd, we'll be right back here at Seeley Swan High School for our 1:00 PM graduation. Our three Missoula middle schools will hold their promotion ceremonies on Thursday, June 7th, with Meadow Hill at 5:30 PM, CS Porter at 6:00 PM, and Washington Middle School at 7:30 PM. Thank you.
And then, now item B, is it time for announcements from trustees? Does anyone have announcements they'd like to make? How about on the phone, do you guys have any announcements?
No. No.
Oh, yeah, thank you. And now, as we, at the beginning of the meeting, we opted to move some of the business items forward to make sure we still had a quorum. So now we'll move to item 9A1, which is a policy, and Mr. Thane will explain that.
So we are now at second reading of the Policy on Family Engagement that's specifically required for Title I. It's found on page 50 in the packet, and we conducted first reading and put it out for public comment. In the intervening month, we have received no public comment, so the recommendation of administration is that we pass Board Policy 2159, Parent and Family Engagement, tonight on second reading.
Okay, is there, are there any questions from trustees for Mr. Thane? Okay, I would entertain a motion then.
Standard. This is Grace.
To pass it? Are you moving to accept it, Grace?
I move to, yes, approve this policy as it is in the packet.
All right, second? Okay, second by Mike Smith. All right, any board discussion? Do I ask for public comment now? Any public comment? Seeing none? All trustees in favor of approving the Board Policy 2159 on second reading, please raise your hand or say yes.
Yes, yes.
Good. That's unanimous, as all trustees present. We'll move on to item 10A9, which is an elementary action item, and this is an item to award a bid for Jeanette Rankin School Furniture, and Bernie McWilliams will explain that to us.
Yes, this is the FFNE package for Jeanette Rankin School, where we brought in the architects, any architects to work with the staff, to take this out for bid. We, part of the process was to have the architects go through with staff members at the current Cold Springs Elementary, and see what we can take over, but still in good working condition, and take over the new facility, and the equipment we didn't want to take over in regards to age, we chose to put out for bid, and these are the results. It kind of goes down through each bid pack, and what was selected in each, in each one of them, and in the agenda, I can answer any questions if you have any.
Mike, go ahead.
I was just wondering if the bids that we got were relatively competitive, and are there any?
Yeah. We don't get a lot of competitive, or a lot of participation in these bids. We have a few. I believe there was one California company, and then most are fairly local. I think we had three respondents in this. One did come in late, was not able to be accepted, but we surely like to see more of them, more the better for, for us, competition.
Any more trustee questions? Okay, I would entertain a motion from an elementary trustee on the phone to award the above-referenced vendors for the Jeanette Rankin Elementary School Furniture Fixtures and Equipment. Or Mike. Oh, excuse me, we have Mike.
I'll assume.
Second from the phone?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we, it's been moved and seconded that we accept the administration recommendation. All elementary trustees, oh, sorry, discussion?
Is that Grace that seconded?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Any public comment? Okay, all elementary trustees in favor of, of awarding the contract, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
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 Jennifer?
I think that was four.
Okay, we got two more? All right, so that's all four elementary trustees present. Agenda item 10A10, Authorized Engagement of the High School, Big Sky High School Architect. This is a full board action item, but since we've got Burley at the podium, do you want to go ahead and explain that?
Yeah, so we, we have permission from the board to take these out for RFQs, request for qualifications. We had four submittals, and I'd like to thank the committee, Superintendent Thane, Pat McHugh, Karen Allen, and Principal Natalie Jaeger, Jaeger, for participating in this committee, and we selected CTA architects to run the design for Big Sky High School's lawn project, and we're very happy about it and excited to work with them.
Okay, excuse me. Does the trustees have any questions for Burley? Seeing none? Is there a motion to accept administration recommendation to authorize engagement of CTA architects for the planning of Big Sky High School? Moved by trustee Duggar, second by trustee Gregston. All right, is there any board discussion?
I don't know if WGM's team or not, I'm abstaining, just in case.
Okay. Do you have that, Lenora? Mike's gonna abstain for potential conflict. Is there any public comment? Okay, all trustees in favor of the motion to accept the administration recommendation, please signify by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is unanimous, all trustees present?
Aye.
Hello? All right, except trustee Smith. Okay. Finally, under that same item, new business, we have 10A12, to grant permission to solicit bids for the Russell Elementary School Furniture Fixtures and Equipment. This is an elementary action item. Burley?
Yeah, so we've solicited the expertise of Lou Page Warner, who is the architect, on this project, and we are running it very similar to how I just explained at Jeanette Rankin, where they will work closely with the staff there and reuse any equipment necessary for the new space they're having come in. This is a cis classroom addition, including a new breakout or a common area, lunch tables, that kind of stuff. So, those are the things we'll see in the bid.
Okay, any questions for Burley? Okay, I would entertain a motion from an elementary trustee to accept administration recommendation to grant permission to solicit bids. Moved by trustee Smith.
I'll propose that we accept the recommendation.
All right. Is there a second on the phone?
Second, this is Jennifer.
Okay, second by Jennifer, trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Any public comment? Okay, all elementary trustees in favor of accepting the administration recommendation as moved, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous as to elementary trustees present. Now, we're going to double back to Item A9.
Eleven.
Oh, eleven. Not so good with my Romans here. Okay. Grant permission to solicit bids for the general contractor for the agricultural education processing kitchen remodel. Burley?
I've been talking about this for a long time, and it's finally out, and I'm feeling pretty good about it. So, this is the new Egg Ed meat plant that they'll be using. It's basically a meat processing plant that will actually produce meats for our food service program. We're very excited about it. And this is a little retroactive, where this is already on the streets and is opening on May 2nd. What's next Tuesday? May 3rd? May 2nd? Anybody got it, Hunter? It opens next Tuesday.
May 1st. May 1st.
May 1st.
Okay. Are you done?
I apologize for that.
Does anyone have any questions for Burley? I have a question. Do any Sealy Swan students participate down at the Egg Center?
I don't believe so.
Cat might know.
I don't believe so. It's the three Missoula High Schools that do.
Is it physically possible for that to happen?
Just think of the transportation.
It could happen. It would be a matter of looking at busing and transportation and the cost of that.
Right. Okay. Any other board questions? Okay, we entertain a motion to accept the administration recommendation to grant permission to solicit bids for the education processing kitchen remodel. Moved by trustee Breckstedt.
This is Marcia, I'll second it.
Second by Marcia. You can let it die for a second. That's my favorite thing. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we accept administration recommendation. Is there any trustee or board discussion?
Abstaining.
Mike?
I'm gonna abstain if this vote is what comes. Abstaining. This vote.
I don't know about this. Okay, Mike Smith abstains. What, sorry?
We have plenty of votes.
Yeah, we do. We're good. Any other board discussion? Any public comment? So, all trustees in favor of the motion to accept administration recommendation, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous as to all trustees present. We're going to move on to Item 10B1, which is to approve the first reading of Board Policy 4335 about website accessibility. Mr. Thane? Or Patton?
Thank you. This policy is very straightforward and direct, and it references an effort that we began implementation on in September of this current school year. It recognizes that even though the Americans with Disabilities Act has been in existence since 1974, the proliferation of the Internet and design standards on the Internet for individuals experiencing a range of disabilities have not always been up to date. And over the past five or so years, public colleges like University of Montana, private businesses like Target, and public K through 12 schools like the Montana School for the Deaf and Blind or Great Falls Public Schools have received a range of Office of Civil Rights complaints regarding the accessibility of their website. So, MCPS undertook a proactive process to update our website according to the design standards referenced in this policy. We'd like to give the board some more education at a May board meeting when we're back in Missoula about the things that we have asked staff to complete in order to adhere to these design standards. But at this point, we simply recommend that you open this for first reading and open it to public comment.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for Patton? Okay, would entertain a motion to accept the administration recommendation to approve first reading of this board policy?
So moved.
So moved by trustee Smith, second by trustee Breckstedt. Any trustee discussion? Board discussion? Any public comment? Okay, all trustees in favor of the motion to accept administration recommendation, please signify by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous as to all trustees present. One of them's farther away than the other. Okay, and then our finally item that we've moved forward for business is 10B2, which is to approve first reading of the revised proposed Board Policy 3110. We've had a first reading on this policy, but there were significant revisions, and so it's coming back again for first reading. Mark?
As the chair indicated, we had first reading of this policy at our last board meeting, and there were questions about whether or not the language as drafted would compel the trustees to enroll four-year-olds into our program. So, in consultation with council, there are three changes that are referenced on page 64, and they've been highlighted. So, the first is the deletion of the initial sentence of the policy, which was changed from compulsory language, and in the second paragraph became permissive. That language change in the second paragraph would delete the words "have the right to" and substitute instead "may." And then, the most significant change is the first sentence of the fourth paragraph. And making sure that we had permissive language, council recommended the addition of the following sentence. Except when enrollment is otherwise required by law, the Board of Trustees has the discretion to give special permission to enroll a student who has not reached the age of five, honorable before September 10th of the year where there are exceptional circumstances. So, council's confident that the concerns raised by trustees on first reading last month are now addressed in the revised policy. It's the administration's recommendation that the trustees approve this policy as amended for first reading and that we post it for public comment.
Okay, are there any board questions about the policy?
I do have a question. This is Grace.
Okay, Grace, go ahead.
My question is, I mean, it's not a circumstance that we anticipate happening anytime soon, but if the circumstance came along that we were able to offer something closer to universal pre-K for four-year-olds within MCPS, would we have to, that would obviously require us to change this policy?
I think that's an excellent question. It would depend on the type of action that the legislature took. If the legislature were to advance funding for universal preschool, that would not be subject to this policy. It would be certainly governed by separate statute. This policy is enforced mainly so that the trustees can recognize exceptional circumstances, which might be students who are identified as meeting the criteria under Number Two in the middle of the policy, and allowing us to request A and B reimbursement on those students as kindergarten students. In fact, we do admit early kindergarteners presently under existing policy, but we wanted to clarify, given our interest in an early kindergarten program, the criteria that we would use to identify students we would serve. But if universal preschool came into play, that would be governed differently. We would have to evaluate any policies attendant to that change should the legislature take action.
Okay, as a further example, there was an opportunity last year to apply, many districts around the state, and private programs did apply for public funding for pre-K. That would not be precluded, but if another opportunity like that came along, this particular policy wouldn't preclude participation in an opportunity like that.
No, it would not. Our concern previously was long-term sustainability, and that's why we looked at this model, because A and B would afford us that sustainability. But if the legislature were to put forth a funding stream that was predictable, or if we were to choose to avail ourselves of a grant opportunity, we wouldn't be precluded to do so under this policy.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? So, do we have a motion to accept the policy as revised for first reading?
So moved.
That was Grace, I think.
This is Grace.
Okay. Okay. This is Grace, seconded by Mike Smith.
Grace.
Grace. Okay. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Okay, all trustees in favor of accepting the policy for first reading, please signify by raising your hand or saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's unanimous as to all trustees present. And I think that's our last action item. Is it?
Consent agenda.
Right, that's a, no, that's an action item also. Okay, stay on the phone there, guys. Okay. Number eight, now we're back on the schedule, the consent agenda. Typically, the board approves the use of a consent agenda to expedite business at regular monthly meeting. These are items that we see regularly and that we do not typically discuss. The information's on page 32 of the packet, and the only item on the consent agenda is to approve revenue and expenditure reports. Are there any questions from the trustees? All right, is it, do we have a motion? Moved by trustee Duggar. Is there a second? Second by trustee Breckstedt. Any board discussion? Public comment? Okay, so all trustees in favor of accepting the administration recommendation for the revenue and expenditure reports, please signify by raising your hand.
Aye. Yes, aye.
That's unanimous as to all trustees present. Okay, that moves us to Agenda Item 10A2, which is the general fund update from Mr. McHugh.
Actually, bonding expenditure update. We didn't do, we'll do the secondary, but not the elementary.
Okay. Excuse me. We're now on Item 10A1, the secondary bond expenditure update, again from Pat McHugh.
All right, thanks. So, both the secondary and the elementary expenditures are on page 53. This is a format you've seen before, and it's an update through March outlining expenditures by school. We'll provide a further update in a little more detail in a different format as we're getting deeper into the construction, as apparent from this spreadsheet, that we have projects now rolling throughout the district. And as we, in particular, come to completion on a, not completion, but the later stages of some of our bigger projects. So, we're on target for September completion, September 2020. That's our target.
Okay. Are there any questions for Pat? I have a question. Can you tell us the status of the Sealy Lake work? Is there anything left to be done?
I think, I don't believe this is bond-related, but Burley was mentioning some, a wall that needed some repairs, but in terms of bond work, I believe we're done.
Okay. Any other board questions? Okay, any public, should we go to public? A public comment? Okay. All right. And then we move on to Item 10A2, the general fund update, again with Pat McHugh.
All right, so pages 54 and 55 reflect both the elementary and the high school general fund expenditures. If you look on page 54, you'll see the columns at the top show the elementary, and then next to it on the far right is the high school. And not surprisingly, we're expending the bulk of our budget into the salary and benefit area. The, when we're complete at the end of this fiscal year, we'll have expended about 90% of both of our operating budgets in the salary and benefit area. We're monitoring a number of expenditure areas, our student transportation costs, substitutes, utilities, our sick termination, our termination pay, and also some of our salary areas, primarily in some of our hourly areas. But otherwise, we're doing pretty well. And as we get closer to the year-end, we'll have a better idea what year-end funds we might have available for use on purchases for materials and the like. So, at this point in time, we're pretty much on track.
Are there any questions for Pat on the expenditures? Any public comment? Now, we're on transportation fund?
No, technology.
Oh, my gosh, I scribbled all over. Can't read it. Okay. 10A3, Technology Fund Update from Ray Cooper, Director of Technology.
This is just the normal report.
Okay.
Do you have any questions? This does not include the technology purchase of devices that I asked for the last four annual, that yet to be taken out.
So, this is our standard technology fund, not bond-related?
Not bond-related, no.
Okay.
Just standard fund.
Okay. Any questions from trustees? Any public comment?
Transportation, no.
Okay. All right. Item 10A4, Transportation Fund Update from Burley McWilliams.
So, this is transportation budget through the end of March. So, with two and a half months remaining, we have about 66% of the elementary budget expended and 64% of the secondary expended. This is for to and from school only, including Sealy Lake. So, we're looking pretty good to finish the year just about on our budget. Maybe you have to answer any questions you have.
Mike?
I'm just wondering if there's any lingering effects of the transportation, like last year when we had the, like the Lowell Franklin kids kind of temporarily moved over. Are we still seeing anything like buses having to come in different parts of the school and like that now, or are we pretty close to back to normal? I wouldn't call it normal.
Yeah, we're doing pretty good. We had to keep one of those routes from Lowell Franklin, but we eliminated two. So, we did have to keep one with, to make Lowell work with geographically, just it happened to be that year. So, we did lose two routes this year at the beginning of the year. But no, our buses are, they adjust every day from a standpoint of special needs and fit families. Those are adjusting on a daily basis almost. So, but that's, everything else is pretty constant. Thanks.
Any other trustee questions? Public comment? Okay, thanks, Burley.
This is only the secondary building reserve.
Okay, and then, could you, on Item 10A5, the secondary building reserve fund update? Page 59.
Yes, so on page 59, it kind of shows the, our quarterly report that we provide with bond expenditures. We get pretty detailed in this where you can kind of see where all the funds went. Couple of things I'll point out is some of the environmental, asbestos sections under the Sealy. Those were, we did some mold testing up here, and one of them has some water damage. some water damage, and then we've done some lead testing up here as well. And then, some roof leaks. So, we've had some roof leaks. We have pretty harsh winters with some flat roofs up here, so we spent a lot of time up here with snow removal on the roofs, and that usually includes some sort of lifting, lifting mechanism like a crane, or to get snow blowers on our roof, which can be tough on a membrane roof, but it's the most efficient, quickest way we can get snow off our flat roofs when we get two, three feet of snow. So, we have a little bit of nicks and terrors in there. So, this is some of the roofing repairs we've done up here at Sealy Lake over the last few months. So, if you look at the third quarter expenditures for '17, '18, we're at $26,950. It's pretty slim. I think it might be the smallest quarterly report expenditure we've had since I've been, since the life of this, this bond, so, hiring this levy. So, it's been pretty slim, and the bond has obviously helped pick up some of that, some of the slack with the capital projects, but no, our trades and crafts departments deserve some kudos for making our budgets work.
Any questions for Burley?
Any questions?
Go ahead now.
And is the bond the message?
Building reserve.
So, this levy, so this levy ends in June of this year.
It's coming June.
Correct. So, what we have regarding their balance in June is what we have. Yes, sir, and we'll continue to manage that appropriately.
So, we'd have to pass another levy to get additional funding, is that correct?
Um, yeah, I mean, if we were, if we want to get our levy, you'd have to go out for more funds. If you want more funds, you have to go out and get that.
Okay. Trustee Smith?
I think, I think you answered pretty much what I was, what I was thinking, but I'm looking at the balance we have here, and that, that includes obviously everything up till June with the levy that we passed seven years ago, whatever it was. And if we're seeing expenditures in the $100,000 range, this could, barring any other major issues, because we have a lot of new infrastructure, this, this might last for a couple of years, is that? And I don't have to question.
Please, sure, I don't want to try to predict the future, but you know, this is based on a $450,000 a year budget.
Right. And that's where I'm going with it. If we have, if we've been spending $450,000 a year, and we've been replenishing it for ten, well, at least 10 or 12, 14 years.
Seven.
And one, seven before that, too.
Yeah.
If we don't have it replaced.
The weird thing is, is this could, you could, you could lose, you could have a large issue come up really quick where you have, where this money, these monies could,
right.
Just be pretty quickly. You know, a boiler, this one you pay for a boiler, so, and we're replacing most of our boilers, and there's still a couple of boilers out there that we, that won't be replaced for bond projects. So, that's, they're in good working condition, which is one of the reasons we're keeping them, but not to say something serious doesn't happen within our facilities, but yes, we, we budget pretty strict to make these last as long as we can to be, you know, fair to our taxpayers best we can.
Again, I know you guys have done a good job planning the sunset of this and kind of being very tight with your budgets, and we appreciate that, taxpayers appreciate that, I'm sure. One final question, with all the flat roofs and that we're dealing with the snow and that, do any of our new projects have flat roofs, or did we learn our lesson from that?
We tend to see a little different snow load in Missoula. Most are, all, all are flat roofs, although we have, went through a lot of structural updates as well with our bond projects that helps with that. So, but in my 10 years, we've never removed snow in the Missoula, Missoula area off of roofs, so yeah, hot consoled, but we tend to do it every year at Sealy.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Burley? Okay, any public comment? All right, well, that was information only, so now we move on to, let's go on here. Yeah, it's, okay. Item six, which is an information only, which Pat will explain.
All right, so what this agenda item addresses is the fact that the high school bond proceeds, a significant amount of those proceeds, $6 million, are being expended to improve the Willard School building and to actually build a new Willard School. That property is actually an elementary property, and so, given that level of investment by the high school and the high school taxpayers in voting that bond, we're looking at recommending, and this is not an action item, but we're wanting to talk about transferring title into the high school, a piece of that Willard property. And if you look on page 60, you'll see that Willard is broken into two parcels, and so we had only discussed transferring title to the, to the property where Willard is being constructed from the elementary to the high school. This is about capital asset management and having that property owned by the district which invested all those funds and all those resources. You know, it also sort of flows into our insurance plan. We pay, we have two districts, elementary and high school, and we pay insurance proceeds or premiums based upon those various properties that we own. And so, from a risk standpoint, this is really a high school operation and a high school piece of property. I've put into the background section a discussion about, do we recognize some consideration for this conveyance in the, in the form of conveying some property, high school property to the elementary? And I don't see that as being as critical, just because, you know, it's likely that this home vale property, the property that I'm recommending is, is a piece of property we'll want to talk about and, and possibly invest the proceeds, but from an asset management standpoint, it makes some sense that you would recognize that, that conveyance by making another conveyance in the form of consideration. So, the elementary would receive an ownership interest there. Mostly interested in getting the Willard property in the, in the name of the high school.
Are there any trustee questions or comments? Mike?
Thanks, Pat. I guess I just want to make sure that I understand this. Basically, the Willard is the high school, the property is the elementary property. It's been operating, the high school and the elementary for how long? Decades?
Fifteen years.
A couple of decades, okay. So, what I'm hearing then is if we treat the, the two districts as separate entities, if the elementary district bequeaths that property to the high school so they can use it, we want to make sure that the high school does something back to make it fair for both parties, is that?
That's the consideration, that's the idea.
The layman's language, okay.
Yeah.
And then, is there any impact? I mean, that doesn't, if you're in the high school district and you, and the acreage of the high school ownership goes up, that person's tax doesn't change, just based on that?
Not at all, no. It's more a reflection of the high school taxpayers supporting that high school bond and using a portion of those proceeds to invest in this asset that ought to sit on property owned by the high school.
And I agree that should, okay, I just want to make it clear for that. Thank you.
There any more board questions or comments? I guess I do, and I guess no one asked my opinion, but I don't like this proposal, and I'm hoping that maybe the administration can come up with some alternative proposals. As, as an elementary district, our job is to own school properties in Missoula, not within driving distance of Missoula, and I'm very concerned at that part of town that the amount of land the elementary district owns is very limited. And so, I, I'd like to really think about this. Personally, if the elementary owns the land and the high school owns the building, nobody's going to get nuts and sell it. So, I think, I think in a way this protects our asset for, in perpetuity, if it, if neither district can sell it. So, I'd like to see some other proposals, or some other conversations about this before we get to the point of making any kind of decisions or having recommendations.
I don't really, I don't necessarily insist on real estate in a piece of just accepting questions, and I'll be honest and say that it was difficult for me to hear everything that was shared, but I think that I am in agreement with you that I need more clarification on why this is a critical move for the district to do. There are lots and lots of the people that the building is being owned by one entity and that it is being owned by another, and the elementary district, that it could continue to be an asset in that sort of way.
Okay, thanks, Grace. Anything else on the phone there? Any other board comments? Okay, then we move on to item seven, which is the process to fill a vacancy on the board.
And I'm going to interrupt for a minute because I think we're about to lose trustee Newbold, is that correct?
I'm still available for about another 20 minutes.
Okay, perfect. Then why don't we continue?
Okay, so, item seven, discuss the process to fill a vacancy on the board. Pat?
All right, so, information only, again, as you all know, we didn't have a trustee candidate in District B, I want to say, and as such, will our board policy 1113 compel the trustees to appoint a successor? And by policy and by statute, that happens in a relatively quick period of time. So, once the position is declared vacant by the trustees, within 60 days, the trustees shall appoint a successor who will fill in that seat until the next election. So, that would be May of 2019. And the process that I've outlined on page 63 is something that we've used in the past. It's, it recognizes when the, the position becomes vacant, sort of when the clock starts ticking on the 60 days, and then a process by which we request, or the district requests applicants to file information indicating their interest in that position. What we've done in the past is held a special meeting to, to interview the candidates and for the board to make the selection. The selected candidate has to qualify, which means they have to fit within that, the relevant boundaries of District B, and, and then by completing the oath of office and having, accepting the position, like the certificate of candidacy, like all trustees that are elected. So, this is sort of just introducing you all to this process and the schedule that you see that's attached on page 62. Certainly able to be tweaked to fit your, your interest in what might work best for you all.
And the boundaries of District B are the target range and Bonner School district boundaries?
That's correct.
Are there any trustee questions? Any public comment? Okay. Um, next, we'll move on to item eight to explore leasing of the Mountain Jumbo property.
All right, so, this is, again, an informational item. Mount Jumbo School is mentioned up until last year when, when Lowell Elementary used it while their school was under construction. This school was leased, and it had been leased for about 11 years. To Walla Walla College, we leased about 59% of that building, and at the end of the last year of that lease, the lease was generating about $67,000 a year. It was also, as part of the lease, the tenant was covering the cost of utilities and insurance, so it was a triple net lease. We're, we're looking to, to explore the, the re-leasing of this facility, likely on a short-term basis, five years or less, possibly with some, some terms that would give us the ability to get out of the lease and reuse the school, in, in the event that we need or would want to use it for a school again. But in the interim, we'll, again, bring this to the board as an action item at some point, but want to put in front of the board the notion that, that we'd like to get this out, out there as a potential site to lease once again, and to sort of minimize our, our costs and, and to potentially generate a little bit of, of revenue.
Any questions? Mike?
I'm just wondering if leasing is the only option that we looked at for that, I don't know, if, I know that it's a good moneymaker, we can't lease it, but if there's another education program or something, then, and obviously if you lease it to an education one, that'd be nice, but if there's, I don't know, pre-K or something like that that ends up being there, or whatever, I guess, were there other options discussed before we landed on leasing?
For the school district to use it, or?
Yeah, for, for either the school district to use it, or if the school district will allow some other entity to use it. I would like to make money from it. Sure. I want to make sure that all the options are just visited.
I think Pat described it well. I think our interest is, number one, covering the overhead, because even if we're not using it as a facility, it needs to be maintained, heated, et cetera. So, that's first priority. Second, it would be nice to generate some income. Last year, we took a look at the number of students that we have by GEO code who live in the East Missoula area. We're at about 156 students, K8, so it's not a large enough population likely to sustain an elementary building, but East Missoula is ripe for development, and we've heard that repeatedly, and Rattlesnake School is also essentially bursting at the seams. So, I think the confluence of those two would cause us in the near future to wish to consider whether or not we would reopen Mountain Jumbo as an elementary school. So, in the interim, if we could find someone interested in a lease who would not require modifications to the facility, I think that would be the best-case scenario. So, again, Pat expressed it well. I think we simply want to explore whether or not there's a market in Missoula's current climate, and if we could identify a compatible lessee, then it's in our best interest to do so.
So, would that be like the next step, then, just to kind of, I, I want to make sure that we?
Next step is to do some research, and then we'll bring research to the trustees before we contemplate any action.
Thank you. That's what I'm.
And this is trustee Holland.
Okay, go ahead.
Would it be of any benefit to the district if a portion of the building was rented out, or would that be kind of a cost neutral, because you'd have to maintain the entire building in, in terms of heating and sidewalk maintenance and things like that? Or are you looking to a, a lessee who's going to rent the whole building?
I think ideally, we would want to lease the entire space. We, the, the lease with Walla Walla was about 59% of the leased space, and then we use part of it really as, as storage, but I think ideally, it would, it would be a lease of, of the entire space.
Great.
Any other questions, trustees? Any public comment? Okay, and I think that ends.
If you want to table the last.
And then, our, our final item is item 10C, 10C, which would have assigned us to attending the various graduation ceremonies. I would suggest we table that item because not everybody's here, and it's hard, hard to make this decision right now. Does everybody agree?
Is that okay, Mark? I would like to do that, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, we'll just, so, but the dates are here for us to look at and consider which ones we can attend, so.
And I, remind me, is the little school events also listed?
Yeah, they are. They're all three listed there, yeah.
Just didn't have access to my computer, thanks.
Okay. All right, then I guess we'll move on to public comment on non-agend items, and seeing none, we are adjourned.
And thank you for bearing with us on the phone.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you very much. Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.